Well, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock, so we will get the Allen County Commission, the August 23rd, 2022 edition underway. I'd like to call this meeting to order and just remind you that there are really sensitive microphones in these blue ellipses in the ceiling, so if you have a side conversation, that is being streamed into YouTube, and it'll be memorialized there forever, and so just to let you know how that all goes. If you turn your cell phones off, that would be great. It's a silence. That would be super. Harrison, how are you today?
I'm doing well. Students are back.
We'll call Commissioner Rivera.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Gosser also here. I'd like to have you stand and join me in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, public hearing. There is none listed. I had four comments from the public. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make a public comment from today?
Got a quick synopsis for you on Fox script. As you know, we had some major flooding down through there. We had, I mean, T Squared come in and they had a drone fly and stuff, so we got some interesting data and pictures for that. And currently, we've got the road repaired back up to kind of where Chris Johnson branches. We have a section in between there that's gonna take some more material and stuff. And right now, on Highway 11, they're fully chip sealed, so it kind of connects us from Hall and Oh, you have our trucks sitting in the pilot car half the day, so. We're hoping to get started on that full force again on Monday and hope to have it open. I did some. Anyway, that's kind of where we're at with that. Questions or anything? Road bridge department will let them know where we're at.
Probably be closed off in the road. Or is it still passable?
It's actually closed off. You can get through it if. With a Jeep or something. Higher profile, boarder driver, so. But it's got some bigger rocks and stuff. So we do have it closed at this time between Wild Post 4 and Wild Post 7.
So I have a question. Because of, is it washed out in more than one place? I mean, can people either go? Maybe they don't have the option of going out of their both directions, but can they? Even the people in that space go down?
Right, and that's why we worked on the road to get to Chris's place. I gave him an exit out. The ten bencils are on the other side, and they can exit out to the, to the west, northwest. There's nobody in between there that is landlocked or whatever, so. Right now, where it's, you get vehicles, it's one of those places. Basically, it's closed through traffic.
Thanks, Rob. Anybody else like to make public comments here, please?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, September 14th through 16th, Laramie is going to be hosting the Wild Pass and YO Geo, or YGEO conference, or called a GeoPass. So this will be, this will be a conference for GIS professionals as well as planning professionals we held here. I was actually coming to ask to see if you would be one to sponsor this event. The city of Laramie knows is sponsoring this. I'll pose that to you as well to see if I support the event and we'll get our logo up there. Have the thing probably like, a $500 in this year of sponsorship. And that actually gets us one free pass into it, so. So I don't know.
Somebody need to know this by, to be added to the agenda tonight? You need to know that quickly?
It'd probably be good. It'd be good, yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you, David. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Anywhere. How about online? Just raise your hand or unmute yourself. That would be just fine. Go on once, go on twice. I entertain motion to close the public conference.
I still move.
Second. Move to second today for the discussion. Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, second by a second.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose it, second. That motion carries. Item five, disclosures. Commissioner Rivera.
I have none.
Sure.
I have none.
End up for my, other, six, considerations of changes to the NGAF. Thank you, Bailey.
You go. I need to remove number 18 agreement with the sheriff's office for prevention plans. It's just not quite ready yet.
Okay.
Well, hopefully it'll be on your next agenda.
We're gonna fill 18, sounds like.
Yes. I was contacted by the city of Laramie. They are doing a catering permit for the cabinet steakhouse for the football game on September 3rd, so it falls right before our first meeting in September. But it would just be the letter authorizing the cabinet to use their license with city limits is what the.
You would put it in 25A, right? Next to the other government steakhouse.
Thank you.
If we could put 28A, the GeoPass. We gave a discuss about sponsoring that. Great.
Can we do 27A?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Excuse me, 27A. Thank you. Commissioner Rivera. Anything else, Jennifer, Jack? Item seven, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent agenda.
Okay.
Move to second today for the discussion. Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, second by a second.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose it, second. That motion carries. Item eight, we're on the regular agenda. Present for acceptance petition, petition, excuse me, for vacation of a portion of Maple Avenue and a portion of road commonly known as First Street located in Section 3, Township 15 North, Rain 78 West, 6th Primary and Centennial, Wyoming, and a point of viewer. Jill or David, would you introduce this topic or Jill or somebody who wants to speak?
I'm not.
Okay, how about you, Dave?
I'm Dave Coffey, Coffey Engineering. I've helped the applicant Jill Gustafson present her petition. She owns property on Maple Street in Centennial that occupies a piece of the right-of-way. This is close to another vacation that the commission awarded to the Mountain View Hotel, I believe. Mountain Valley Hotel in Centennial a few years ago. Ms. Gustafson is, understands that her A-frame building is, I think it's A-frame building, right? Is in the right-of-way and also recognizes that there's a need to provide access on an existing road that crosses her property along the front edge of the highway. So I believe that the petition requests that the county consider vacating a portion of Maple, which I believe is, Maple, which is in the petition, and that that the county commissioners consider that, that it is part of the making things right in the right-of-way. We've addressed this a number of times, and this isn't the only situation like this that we've had to address. It won't be the last. But in helping Mrs. Gustafson, we tried to balance, you know, the the need for a public right-of-way through there. She's willing to grant an easement across her property to allow continued traffic to the Maple View Hotel. As long as she can actually own and fee her lands that happen to be, or the land that her her building occupies in the right-of-way that frankly hasn't been used ever, as far as we can tell. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, Mr. Coffey.
So to be clear, this is not a decision. This is just, we're accepting the petition. As if I have an idea to a point.
This is.
As the viewer, but I don't know if anyone has talked to her.
This is the point where you, you accept the petition as it is and a point of viewer, or we make changes now. This is part of that revised procedures that we did last fall when we relooked at all the statutes. So this is where you accept the petition as it's presented to you. It can be modified later depending upon the viewer's report, but it's, this is the decision as to whether or not you want to move forward with the vacation.
Harrison, anything follow?
No, I, I'm happy to move forward with the vacation. It's just a question of whether the land adjacent that's being used as a road now is is, becomes right-of-way, in other words, replacement for the vacation. Stays deeded. And only, and only hasn't used, because I have an opinion about that. So the, the question is, is this accepting the petition later it's presented? Or are there chances to have this discussion later?
For me, that one's free.
So. So I think you can, if you believe that the vacation would be in the public's best interest, you can accept the petition. And if you want to accept it subject to some potential language about where they have an easement and you would prefer that to be something else, we can address that now, at least in general theory.
Well, I'll explain sort of my position that I've always had as a commissioner when it comes to sort of the strangeness and shenanigans in Centennial, and that is that the easiest thing to do is to sort of redraw it the way that it is. Everyone's used to using it that way. And so the chunk of right-of-way that is Maple Street, that A-frame occupies, is a nice big square, or mostly square, kind of trapezoidal piece of land that that has a fair amount of value in its shape and place, and it has a building on it. And then because Maple Street can't exist, the private land adjacent to it is being used as as the street. And, and I, I just want to do land swap. I just want the, the little watermelon slice to be, you know, all the way, including the street to the north, which I think is Second Street, maybe it's First Street. I can't remember. You know, so basically, some setback from the edge of that building. So it's not on the right, you know, on the line of the right-of-way, but I want it to be deeded to the county like the street. I mean, I don't really understand why the petitioner would want to, you know, an easement, because then you have to pay taxes on something. If I may. I don't know why an applicant would want to pay taxes on a piece of land.
I, I have.
Isn't very developable because it's so narrow from door to side.
I've just spoken to a client. She's agreeable to changing it to a public right-of-way rather than these. I've shown up. Petition.
Perfect. I know the square footage of, you know, the piece that we would vacate is, you know, it's a nice piece of property. The little watermelon slice kind of is used already the way that it's used. Based on, I don't know, I guess we sort of have a special district there, but because that goes out to a point on its west end, it's not very usable. Be better if, if Jill could have the, the building and the land that it's on and basically in exchange for the watermelon slice and have that whole thing be a little bargain lot in Centennial.
I think she's willing to exchange the right-of-way for the, to allow continued access to First Street, I guess it's called, from the highway, but she's not willing to give up entirety of the property.
Well, if you had appropriately, appropriate width piece of, of land there for the right-of-way to replace Maple Street, you'd have a little teeny tiny point left on the end. You know, private land.
Okay. Like, I mean. Is it a deal killer for Commissioner Hevers?
Kind of is. I mean, or maybe, maybe on the east end of that watermelon slice, you know, where it meets up with the, the right-of-way. You know, an extra 10 feet or something should be kept by her on the east end of hers so that it could be vacated all the way to the point out there in the corner.
I'm curious why the commissioner would want more land that they don't maintain.
It's not about that. It's about contiguousness and messiness, right? My guess is.
That's what this petition does, is address a concern that puts property back into fee ownership so that a building can be maintained. And this was not an issue that was created by my client. My client would like to be able to have this building, remodel it, fix it up, use it, and at the same time allow traffic to cross through a portion of land that historically has. So what I understand, you would prefer that she give up more lands than what she's willing to compromise with.
No, it's the opposite, because the piece is fatter on the east end than it is on the west. So she got an extra five or 10 feet on the east end of hers.
So are we talking about?
So that you vacate.
Are we talking about giving up square footage for square footage?
No, because if we were doing that, she doesn't have enough square footage to, to match the square footage that's under that building. The counties get, the county would be vacating considerably more than the total accumulation of space, you know, the square footage that's in that little watermelon slice to, to the west of the.
I don't believe you're correct.
Well, so I, to me, I don't know why somebody find like nice ships. I don't, I don't understand why we would put a big, you know, a big strip and then she would keep a little teeny tiny triangle out there on the west end in the middle of three, four streets that, you know. I mean, I guess, I guess if what I'm saying doesn't make sense, then, then that's fine. But I do want the, the street deeded, and I'd actually be more inclined to move the street a little further west and give her a little more setback on the west edge of the right-of-way that we would vacate. You know, in other words, she'd keep more of the east edge of the triangle at its fastest point as opposed, so there's more setback from her building as opposed to, you know.
So Jennifer, just.
I think that sounds reasonable.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to explain.
If we're to accept vacation as it is today, we can make these conversations that, that we can't really do anything about tonight.
I think you can accept moving forward with the vacation with the potential modifications as may come up in light of this discussion and the viewer's reports.
So, so Coffey, we adopted some new things which you're familiar with with Centennial. Previous in Mountain View Hotels, a perfect example. We needed a whole bunch of land that was used to sell, right, in a couple of years. And so I don't believe the county commission was right to do that. And so better not to make the same mistake again. So we put some things in it, in our processes to make sure that that's not going to happen again, that we treat people equitably. So we had somebody come to us who wanted the south part of their vacation. We didn't allow that because that allowed them to have a whole block. We put a safety barrier around the, the property and then left the rest of the right-of-way to the county. I know you know, but just to let people know that we don't own the land, but the public does have an interest in those lands being available to us. So they are worth something. So if you were trying to do this in Manhattan, for instance, that wouldn't happen without some money, right? And that is just how that works. This is not Manhattan. So not forget it or for it, but I'm saying that we want to treat it equitably towards the new rules that we passed maybe six months ago. And conditions are on the ground, are what they are. And so dealing with the church that's in that little spot there too, also dealing with, with Ms. Gustafson's land. You know, we have to find some sort of portable solution. So you guys are amenable to having this conversation in a spot there so we can actually make a decision instead of tonight? We're amenable to having it and applying those things that we do at Centennial that we just now started to do, like requiring a survey, putting safety setbacks instead of giving whole blocks and lots when they're not required. And I understand that's not possible here maybe, but it might be possible towards the north side to take a look at that street, right? And so that is a street that we're probably going to have to think about, the First Street. And I don't think we're prepared to make that conversation tonight, to make those deals. I, I am willing to move forward if, if our legal counsel says, hey, we can, we can make those negotiations happen on some other day with, with David's working with us, when our viewer has our report. And we're just.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's what we were expecting to do.
Awesome. Super. Do anything else?
Yep.
All right. Jill or anybody you want to speak to, and you don't have to.
I have a question.
Sure.
So is she able to improve on the land during this process because she not losing out on monies throughout all this pondering?
So my quick answer is no, because, because the land is not owned by Jill. And so you could do it, I guess, but then it did. Okay, until we did do that, you was just gonna be shrooming a house over somebody else's land, which probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense financially.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't build on something that I didn't have ability to burn it for. Couldn't describe an own piece property.
Yeah. Jill, improve it.
Thank you. What, in the petition, it's kind of like, what I'm asking for is the way it is now. There's a road back to Mountain View. The First Street stays the same. The fire department has access and they're happy with that rotation there. I get my house. I can fix my house up. I've lost five years of revenue on it. The church is happy. The pastor's here today. How that division there, he's quite content with that. I think, I think we've tried to make it a so that's, I just wanted to say, as it is now is the way.
Well, this.
It's a two-layer road back to the Mountain View and it's always been a two, a two-track road. Back to the Mountain View.
Yeah. Well, there are considerations beyond you and Centennial, because you are not the only person in the street as you well know.
Oh.
And it's a
As you guys know.
Setting a precedent to be equitable to everybody in the future. We can, in my opinion, that we should anticipate everybody in the right-of-way to have this same petition, and we should be able to figure out how to do it equitable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Jill, I applaud you and, and the church for working things out together anonymously and all. But there are other things to consider as well.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to either accept or not accept the petition for vacation on the question of Maple Avenue as described.
I move that we approve item eight as presented as super vacation for a portion. And a point of viewer, which in this case, now I'm having a blank. How could I?
Was present at the last meeting but was not able to be at this one. I don't think.
And, and appoint Karen Bolden as viewer.
So second. Move to second today for any further discussion.
Yeah, how could I think of that?
I entertain that all is in favor, second by a second.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose it, second. That motion carries. So we'll move on to the next round and, and we'll be sending a viewer and then the world will happen from there. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Item nine, present for discussion, county courthouse boiler purchase and installation for snowmelt systems and request direction from the commissioners. Says Jake on there. There you go, Jake. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioner. So this item, I think Roy talked to you specifically, but this is for the, putting a boiler in for the snowmelt system on the north side of the courthouse. And we've got all of the pipes ran in the concrete. That was done as part of the courthouse north entry project. But the boiler was not ever purchased or installed, and I think it was for budgetary reasons. But the concrete on the north side is, it hasn't been, it wasn't designed and it wasn't put in to withstand all of the harsh chemicals that snowmelt materials have because it has a snowmelt system in it. And, and so Roy and I were discussing the possibilities of, of putting the boiler in, and, and we just want to hear from the commission that, what direction we should go, if we should put this out to an RFP or RFQ or to a bid. The project has already been designed. The boilers have been sized. It just requires purchasing and installing it. And the estimated cost is $30,000, $35,000. But the flip side of that is that if, if we don't do something and we damage the concrete outside by using snowmelt, there's going to be a significant cost associated with with replacing the concrete and also with all of the expense that that all of that tubing has already been, we've already spent money on the tubing for the snowmelt system. We just don't have a boiler to run it.
Thank you, Jake. Mr. There's any questions?
I'm curious if that makes sense to sue. When, when we designed, funded front entry, we didn't have the money for the boilers. Wheelchair have the, the concrete out here, but they put the tubing in so it's there. So.
And the design.
Yeah. So, so basically, we're at the place where, you know, it's plug and play by a boiler and have it installed and it's safe out there. And even less important to me is It's safe out there. And even less important to me is. Damage you concrete with ice. It's more about. Safety, you know, for people. Cause the sun never hits that north side of the courthouse in winter time. And, um, ice can live and, you know. Sort of get glacial. So I'm off there. Just. You know, where we get the money from is, is the thing. But to me, it's.
Okay, just a couple of questions. How far out does the, the piping or the? Or the underlay, the melting ice, how far out does that go?
It, um, yeah, in the north entry goes about to where the ballards are. That was put in as part of the new project and then all of the, the new concrete that has, that was installed with the, uh. With the, the north entry project. It, I believe it's in all of that concrete.
And then have you, is this boiler available or is that a six month, nine month, year thing? Or you, do you have any idea about that, Jake?
I don't have any idea about that. I talked to the, uh, design engineer that put the, uh, plans and specifications together and he sent those to me, but he did not. Um, he, he didn't comment on lead time. Uh, we would have to, uh, discuss that with a, with a supplier.
Jackie, still doing renovations, is that what you're? There's just any, anything other than the, the RFP process that we've used for twenty-five thousand higher.
Sounds right to me.
All right, I entertain a motion, private.
I move that we, um. That we direct the county engineer to draft and, and. Publish probably through the county clerk. An RFP or request for proposals for, uh, boiler to heat. The north side sidewalks in the winter time.
Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, see if I'm saying that, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Jake.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Item ten, present for approval, annual compensation agreement to the University of Wyoming and the Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming. To contribute twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars to the University of Wyoming Extension. For the services performed by Mary Louise Wood to assist and encourage the development of Core H Youth Development Programming during the period of July one, twenty twenty-two until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Mary Louise.
Oh, there.
Hey.
I would really encourage. To pay this, that is half of my salary. And in my very humble opinion, uh, you get a pretty good bang for your buck.
I'm bargaining twice the price.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, it's just how audacious if you could come and expect to get paid.
Just a minor detail.
Yeah. I, it's not funny, but it's kind of funny. This is August twenty-third and. Have we not paid him for July?
You've already paid him.
Okay. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item ten.
I move that we approve item ten as presented.
Second.
Moved to second and any further discussions?
It's interesting. We could just put this on consent agenda. And she'd be up there.
That's okay. I am interested in another item you have later down.
Probably not. Yes, I think that that contract could, could. So it's a move in second and any further discussions? Hearing and seeing that all is in favors. To pay Mary Louise. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Mary Louise.
Thank you, guys.
You know, it's interesting. I know that, but it just seems, um.
There are commissioners who have, um, denied in another county. So please don't do that.
When you're after the back, after you've done the service and all.
Uh, that I don't know, but I, yeah, they did deny it. So, yeah.
I bet you they didn't have a majority. Did somebody, some crank just say, get off my lawn or something, you know, like?
No, I think it was actually the commissioners that were not happy and said. We don't want to fund it.
Yeah. And, and I think rightly so.
Oh, maybe they didn't like their extension. Maybe they didn't like their extension person or that was their way of saying.
It was, so, thank you.
That's not true for us.
Item eleven, acknowledged disclosure statements of finances from Tracy Fletcher, Albany County Treasurer and Sunny Mann, Albany County Deputy Treasurer.
Tracy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Congress, sorry, Commissioners. This is my annual disclosure of where Sunny and I as having. Are being the signers on, you know, all the bank accounts where we have our monies. So, um, you can see in the packet that Sunny banks at First Interstate for her personal business and I bank also at Bank of the West to my personal things.
Commissioners, any questions?
Are you still with posters with these accounts?
What's that?
Do you get posters with these accounts?
No, they don't get our posters anywhere or free samples. I ask every time I go in.
I entertain a motion for item eleven.
I move that we approve item eleven as presented.
Second.
Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye, Tracy.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose the same side, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Item twelve, present for approval, approach license. Um, Marcel Demyak, God, I'm sorry if I butchered that name. County Road forty-four, Big Hall Road located at southwest quarter, southwest quarter of section seven, township fifteen north, range seventy-fifth west, rob please.
And they're applying for approach license off of, uh. Big Hall Road. Miles three point five halfway. Down the Big Hall Road, I've looked at the, the sites.
Commissioners, any questions? Take motion for twelve, please.
I move that we approve item twelve as presented.
Second.
Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, see if I'm saying.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Item thirteen, present for approval, first license for Scott B. and Deckard Partley, County Road twenty-four Monument Road located at section six, township thirteen, north range seventy-one west, rob.
Uh, quick correction. It shouldn't be, uh, County Road two thirty-four instead of two twenty-four, instead of twenty-four. I forgot the three. But back enough there, it's, uh. Just, uh, south of it, the Ames Monument.
Commissioners, any questions? Take motion for thirteen, please.
I move that we approve item thirteen.
Second. Moved to second and sure there'll be some big stokers. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, see if I'm saying.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose the same side. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Fourteen, acknowledge receipts and distribution of the U.S. Forest Service Reserve Funds based on the Secure Rural Schools Community Self-Determination Act of two thousand. For the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of three hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, twenty-four cents for Title One to direct the clerk to advertise Title Three Funds in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars, twenty cents. For proposed authorized county projects. Jackie, please.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, I contacted all the elected officials and department units. To see if there was a need for the use of the Title Three Funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And I received a response back from Sheriff Apple Hans and from, um. Fire warden, Chad Ginjas, thank you, uh, who both have in the past, um, been kind enough to split the amount. I am requesting at this time to, um. Allow me to advertise this request pursuant to the requirements under the Title Three Funds. And, uh, bring this back for your consideration.
Commissioners, any, any questions? I entertain a motion for fourteen, then.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented.
Second.
Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, see if I'm saying.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Fifteen, present for approval, correction to the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty tax roll for Kirshopper, Anthony and Jennifer due to incorrect square footage of basement and basement finished. Total refund is for five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents as the owner has paid twenty nineteen and twenty twenty taxes. Tracy.
Chelsea's not with us, um, because she's at training. Um. This needs to come before you because it also results in refunding the taxpayers five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents for that. Taxable correction for previous taxpayers.
Any questions? Oh, is this just a basic square footage miscalculation or was it finished square footage miscalculation?
That I cannot answer as I did not. That's.
Okay, of course I would have.
But I did bill it and I did collect it and have to give them this money back. Because of what it says.
And sorry, how come we're so in arrears as far as this is paid, uh, in two nineteen and two twenty, or in two twenty-two?
I, I believe that, um, it's so far behind because of the brought to the attention before, but, uh, maybe the previous assessor did not take action on it. Or was not able to, um, go out and do this back. But I believe the current, the most current tax year that we have is twenty twenty-one, that was, was correct. That wasn't corrected in the prior.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah.
I entertain a motion for item fifteen. Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. Sixteen, ratify the renewal of equitable sharing agreement between the Albany County Commissioners through the Albany County Sheriff's Office, United States Drug Enforcement Agency, Sheriff Applehands. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is just our yearly agreement with the Drug, U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency. For the equitable sharing program that we have together, so just renew all of that form.
Commissioners, any questions? Sixteen, I entertain a motion then.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Moved to second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, I'll suppose the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. Seventeen, present for approval, grant application to the Department of Health, Public Health Division for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. SABG supplemental funding in the amount of one hundred thousand to implement town gown activities. Bailey, thank you this evening.
Yes. So at the last minute, we did have to just make an adjustment in the application. I just handed you a new one. We just removed the piece talking about, um, OCTA, uh, which Tracy's on and she'll be able to tell you the details about that. But we just, we get the information we needed, so we just decided to remove it, not something we. Um, but just a brief rundown, um, this is kind of, um, this is through Department Health, so we're kind of doing it. Um. We're calling it our town gown application. Town gown is a lot more than just prevention. Um, but the way to get this funding to help us kind of start that program here is to go through. Basically our prevention services, which is a big part of town gown, but it's not the only thing of town gown. So Tracy's on and she can explain a lot more too.
Thanks, Bailey. Tracy, good evening. Thanks for joining with us.
Evening. How is everybody? So, um. The town gown, so really what town gown is exactly what it sounds like. Laramie's the town. Um, our gown is L triple C U W and Y O Tech. Um, we've all worked together for a really long time, um, specifically around prevention services and of course in other realms as well. Um, but we started looking at a true town gown initiative several years ago and trying to decide how we move forward. Um, a lot of the communities that we are modeling, um, is CSU, um, so down in Fort Collins, um, CU and Boulder. Um, there's a, um, a multi-city meeting that we're a part of and we have been a part of for a long time and it's, and it's also, and it includes those communities. It also includes Greeley. So we're really looking at those communities that are very similar to some of the. Thing we deal with as a smaller community with a large university. As we've learned, um, it's a lot more than that. It's economic development, sustainability, student housing. Um, quality of life, diversity and inclusion. So all those things that we deal with because we have so many students in Laramie. Um, and because we are a small community that, um, is sort of engulfed by students nine months out of the year. Um, specifically, um, those nine months, um, Y O Tech is year round. But we, um, and all of these, these organizations, all of our higher ed has worked together really well on this. We've just really been trying to find a way to do a true initiative. And some of that will include, we hope to include a position that, there's one person that really deals with all of that. Um, a, a position that's half funded by the county and half funded by our higher ed. That's down the road. Right now, what we want to do is put together a good infrastructure over the next two years. What do those meetings look like? Um, how do we build capacity? So who do we need, um, at the table to have all of these discussions? And like Bailey said, we're really starting with prevention because the dollars were there and that's a big piece of what we talk about. We all know that our, our law enforcement, um, deals with a lot the first couple of months of school especially. And so. Um, and a lot of it is alcohol and drug issues that, um, tend to ramp up during our school year, game days, things like that. So it really did start as that, but it is so much more. Um, it's really, um, we really want to help our students be good neighbors when they leave our community. And, um, have our good neighbors in Laramie teach those students to be good neighbors. So that's a really big piece of it. Um, so we, we thought if we apply for this money, we can spend the next two years working with our stakeholders within our higher ed institutions, within our county, within our city. Um, as well as, um, our policymakers, so our legislators and our trustees. Making sure everybody's on the same page and really willing to be a part of this and make something great happen. Um, we'll be working with CSU, CU, UNC, um, School of Mines. Those are some of the schools that have already agreed to mentor us through this process. And be just there for us to ask questions and, and learn more, um, what they have done. Um, CSU and Boulder have had a community initiative for a really long time. There is a International Town Gown Association that we would be a part of. A group of us traveled to that conference this year and just learned a lot. We learned, um, the ins and outs of, of doing something like this in our own community. And really it's just a benefit. But again, it's about money and finding the money to make the, you know, infrastructure and get everybody on the same page. And then eventually someday finding the dollars to have a position that would be, um, you know, a shared position so that we all stay on the same page. So. Um, any questions, um, about that or why we're kind of ahead of this direction or what these dollars would be for?
Commissioners.
Yeah, Tracy, speak to the fact that the OCTA that was removed. How will we assess that relationship then?
So the OCTA is kind of an individual agency that I know that in the past, um, CSU has used this. And really what it is in assessment, um, I, I need to go back and look. I, I think we wanted to try to do this several years ago. And really what it is, is taking a survey of our community and asking them what their, uh, what they see as valuable when it comes to the town gown relationships. Um, what, what are their complaints? What are their, their, what are the pros and cons? What do they see as neighbors? What do they see as residents? Um, and then you, you also would ask your students that. I don't think it's a necessity for us to do this evaluation to make this happen. I think we know what goes on in Laramie. We've got the right stakeholders at the table already that are kind of telling us these, these things, the pros, the cons, the good, the bad, the ugly. Um, all those things. And so, um, if we decided to go down that road, I think we could, we could add it in. But I don't think it's a necessity for the budget right now. And I, that was the only big piece. Um, our, our grant writer was looking for something to evaluate this process. But really what we hope to do to evaluate how well the next two years is going is. Do we have the right stakeholders at the table? Have we educated our, our policymakers, specifically our legislators and our trustees? Um, do we have an infrastructure in place that's going to work? Do we have monthly meetings set up? Are we following those? Um, are we, are we participating in the multi-city meetings? Um, and then, you know, are we working through our mentoring process with those other communities? I think for two years for, for what we're trying to do, that will be our evaluation and that will tell us if we're marking off our milestones and, and doing what we need to do. Um, to get to the next step. Um, the OCTA really is kind of that higher level. It's almost like when you're ready to implement that personnel. Um, do we need more information to know if we're headed down the right path? I don't think it's a necessity for us to do what we hope to accomplish. Um, I think she was looking for more of a, an evaluation sort of process. But again, I really don't think it's a necessity for what we are trying to do over the next two years.
Thank you. And I agree with you with the stakeholders that we have present. However, Tracy, we both know that there are a few stakeholders that have not come forward and been represented at these town gown meetings we've been having so far. And I know you're reaching out. I gave you some contact information recently. So I think we can go forward with what we have. And definitely the OCTA, I think should be something once we're established and, and see where those gaps are.
Absolutely. I agree. And Sue, I think that, that's a great point. I think once we're established, that'll then give us that next step. But I do think it's important for us to, just like we've kind of done with COPSA over the last, you know, several months, we've really been re-establishing that infrastructure. And I think if we don't have that infrastructure in mind and sort of have it in place and know where we're headed, then the OCTA is just another thing to check off the list and maybe won't be as useful as what it could be.
Tracy, I want to thank you for keeping the momentum going on this because I know this has been a struggle for some time. This has been a goal and for whatever reason, hadn't you know, put everything on hold because I think some of the struggle was going on beforehand. But it's nice to see that you've managed to bring some of the stakeholders back to the table and we actually are agreed on things and excited and wanting to move forward. So thank you for both you and Bailey doing this. A good job on, on getting this moving.
Thanks, Sue.
Commissioner Rich, say anything. So Tracy, thank you for this. Could you help me with the acronym OCTA? I couldn't find it in the...
All right. I apologize for the inconvenience and the disruptions. I hand the meeting back over to the Commission.
Thanks, Adam. Well, sorry about that. Got a little Zoom bombed there, obviously, and so it took us a while to get back online. So thank you for your patience. Tracy, I think we were at OCTA before the festivities. So could you, could you help me with OCTA? You're on mute, Tracy.
I'm sorry, the optimal college town assessment is what that is. And it really is just that, finding the gaps, like Sue said, and it's looking to see what, what those gaps will be. And so I do think a couple of years down the road, we'll be in a better place where we could really actually find those gaps and then know what we're looking for.
All right. Then my, the last question, last. Heading down this road, is UW committed to being part of this? Because there's no real sense in us going together if, if they're not willing to make the financial commitment. You know, I think we can as a, as a Board of Commissioners, but has Old Main or their trustees said this was important and would set aside budget funding for it?
That's, that is the goal of the next two years is to get that. We do have the Dina students. A lot of their programming is on board, attends the meetings. Our, the Dina students, she is on board. She has been the last several months and been a part of these conversations. And part of this is, in the grant, we will be educating trustees on why this is important, why we hope for this to happen. And so that is a big piece of this. I think in the past, we've, we've gone down that road and then like, like Sue kind of said, things just kind of fell apart. Under the PM, when we were, other prevention funding was under the PMO, we had started this process. Then that changed and then CPS has changed. And so I, I think this time we're in a good place. We're in a steady place where we can actually get some work done. We can take the time to really have those big conversations with Old Main. We've worked, I mean, we've worked through this process on a couple of other things and it, and it's more along the lines of them not fully understanding so they don't fully commit. So I do think a big piece of this process is making sure that we're all on the same page and we're all having the same conversations and they see the value in what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Appreciate that, that sentiment. I don't have any further questions. And Adam, I have a, a person that I don't recognize in the waiting room. How do you want to handle that?
Go ahead and leave it for me. I'll review, see what I can find and then I'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Tracy, any other questions? And I'm sorry about the disjointedness of this, but...
That's okay. I'm glad I was able to zoom in and, and tell you guys about this grant. I'm excited. I hope, I hope we can make it happen and I hope the next two years we can get all the stakeholders we need.
Thank you. Me as well. Commissioners, if you don't have any other questions?
I move that we approve grant application to the Department of Health Division for 21 through, 2021 through 2025 SABG supplemental funding in the amount of $100,000 to implement down gown activities.
Second.
Moved in second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose same sign. That motion carries. Item 18 has been removed. We'll move item 19. Present for approval, sub-recipient agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and the Sharptunist of Laramie for the use of ARPA funds for community service fundraising in the amount of $17,000 for the American Rescue Plan Act grant funding, CFDA number 21.027 for nonprofit project applications. Bailey, please.
This is one of the last few ARPA nonprofit agreements that's coming in. This is for Sharptunist. Again, you guys had already approved the amount that was available to them. This is just the agreement.
So they went through the application process, we've seen enough.
Yep. Yep, they were on the list. We have a few stragglers. The library has also not included their agreement yet. But we have worked with Tracy and Tracy had her reasons.
I had same question, Sue. I couldn't remember. I couldn't remember.
Yeah. And then like, I mean, the library, we're still waiting on, they, it had to go through their board. So I think there's just different reasons for different nonprofits.
Okay, cool. Any other questions for item 19? I'd entertain a motion for that 19 then.
I move that we approve item 19.
Second. Moved in second and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose same sign. That motion carries. Item 20, present for approval, pre-application grant to the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding in the amount of $724,028 to construct restrooms and a small parking lot at the future sports complex. Bailey, please.
So ARPA funding is finally getting, getting straightened out at the state level. They're finally releasing their guidelines. One of the first to come down was the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Program. You guys are actually going to be seeing two applications tonight. We are allowed to apply for one. So the first one is this, sorry, is the, the application for the restrooms and just a small parking lot over by the bush soccer field we have to help them through that process. I've talked with Laura and John multiple times and I've, we're doing this kind of grant by grant, piece by piece. It's not all going to happen at once, but you know, to get the goal completed, that's the way it has to be. But we're hoping to get the restroom building and just a small parking lot out of this funding. And Laura and John are on to give any more input or answer any questions.
Thanks, Bailey. Laura, John, would you like to add to that before we start firing questions at you?
I, I can add that it would also run power and water and sewage over to the west side of that current field in addition to the, which is maybe obvious if you're putting a bathroom over there, but...
Thank you, John. Laura, I'd say you're muted also.
Yeah. My comment was just, it's been hard to find funding for these pieces. So we're pretty excited when, when we found this. And I think in the future, it's going to be easier to find funding for the, for the final pieces. So hoping for good things out of this one.
Commissioners, any, any questions to Bailey or talk to Laura?
I do have more than that.
Sure, Bailey, please.
This is a pre-application. So what Outdoor Recreation is doing is they're collecting pre-applications first, do by the 30th. They'll go through those and then you'll basically be invited to do an actual application if they like your project. And then from there, the application will come back in front of you all and we're hoping for two. So we'll see. But this is just a free, they're doing it a little strange.
Yeah. That's kind of nice actually because if somebody goes through all the work, you know, and then I mean, it means that the applicants don't do as much work before they know whether they're on the final slate or not.
Yeah. I mean, it was not that complicated of a pre-application luckily. So I'm anticipating an application to be a lot more complex, take a lot more time just because this was, you know, sometimes this is an application and a lot of other funding sources. But I mean, Sarah did Pilot Hills and she probably would agree that this one wasn't too bad, but only maybe for you. I don't know. But yeah, I mean, so it was just an interesting process. Hopefully we can get two applications out of this.
I was going to pout, right? Because I saw this and we're bringing for, for funding for the Health Department and it didn't look anything like this. I was like, what?
Are you applying through SLIP?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. SLIP is more complicated for sure. I don't think, and I mean, I may be wrong. I don't think Outdoor Recreation deals with a lot of federal funds, but I could be wrong just because of the way they do certain things and some of the questions they ask.
Any other questions? An entertaining motion for item 20 then, please.
I move that we provide 20th present.
Second.
Moved in second and any further discussion?
Piece by piece is good.
Yeah. Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, John. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 21, present for approval, pre-application grant to the Miami Outdoor Recreation Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of $1 million to Phase One project at Pilot Hill. Bailey and Sarah Brown Matthews.
I'm just actually going to turn this one over to Sarah because she knows all the details. Sarah and I talked before and they had the opportunity to apply Pilot Hill because it is a nonprofit or as the county. So she discussed it with her board and they had decided to apply through the county. So that's why.
Thank you, Bailey. Evening, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you, both our Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. And I also just want to send a little applause Bailey, she's more than wonderful to work with and really helpful in, in these processes for all of us. This grant application is for $1 million, which is a little more than their standard grant. We did go through the Wyoming Office of Recreation and request that we be permitted to apply for $1 million rather than the $749,000 that they had initially suggested as a cap. They did provide that permission to us in writing. So we, we are moving forward with that amount. This will help us combine with other funding, fundraising that we've already completed, complete Phase One of the Pilot Hill plan. A big portion of it will be dedicated toward the primary trailhead for Pilot Hill, which will be located on the east end of Willett Drive on the north side of the street on the University Jacoby Ridge property. The university trustees approved a, an extension to our management agreement so that we have management over that footprint where this trailhead will be located. And it makes it really usable for a variety of user groups in the community with about 70 spaces for automobiles, five spaces for school buses, and also a section dedicated specifically toward horse trailer parking. It also allows for ADA parking on the property and access to the city trails that are paved on the other side of Willett Drive and will include some comfort facilities. We aren't sure what the restrooms will look like at this point yet, but it will have water, restrooms and a gathering space for groups. An example I would use is that in September, the middle school is hosting a regional meet on Pilot Hill at a cross-country race. They expect about 500 youth participating. So we know that having an area that provides for mass starts for events like that and can accommodate families that are coming to support their youth is going to be really important for Pilot Hill and primarily for protecting the landscape and the, and the land itself. We are moving forward with the philosophy that trails truly are for the property, not as much for the, the people, because what they do is protect the land by giving people access to the area in the way that is best managed for the land itself. This area also, we did go forward with an SSI, a site-specific investigation to make sure that where the parking lot is located would not damage the aquifer and that was evident in the SSI. And with that, we went forward to the City Planning Commission and asked for a variance on paving the parking lot that was granted last night. So in your packet, there will be one small adjustment to this application if you approve it this evening. We'll be removing the second portion of the budget that indicates the cost for a paved trailhead at $2.309 million and just including the gravel lot estimate for the trailhead area. Other than that, the, we are awaiting a couple of letters of support to go with this packet and hope with your approval this evening that we can get through the pre-application phase and then see what the real application looks like.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions. I just want to point out that last night's meeting on variance actually was unanimous. There was so much support for the city plan for adjustments.
It was very encouraging. We, you know, we thought initially we were just asking them not to have to pave the parking lot, but it really banned quite a few different variances because along the paving, we have curb and gutter and things that I hadn't really been aware of. And they were very open to the idea that this is very unique for our community. Not many cities have a trailhead within their city limits and the city of Laramie's been very supportive.
So the extension with UW, how long is that?
It's 25 years. It's the same agreement as, it was simply an amendment to our management agreement. And our board will finalize the review of that at this meeting next week and will provide a copy to the, to the Commissioners.
So all in at the same time, releases are all?
Everything is all lined up.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? An entertaining motion for item 21 then.
I move that we approve item 21 as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and any further discussion?
I would just like to say that piece by piece is good. So I'm really appreciative that the city would, you know, sometimes if it's all or nothing, you have nothing because you can't, you can't come up with everything you need to outset. So, so I appreciate that they would allow for the incremental improvements. It's really the only way to call it.
It's a move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll suppose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Bailey. Appreciate it. Item 22, present for approval, juvenile court supervised treatment letter of termination of contract with Overcomer Counseling LLC for group therapy and treatment services. Heather, Bailey?
Heather's not here tonight, so we can't hear you guys.
Okay.
So this, the, there were two agreements with Overcomers. One was for group therapy, one was for individual. As we were looking into things, it seemed that the individual therapy ended June 30th, however, 2022, however, the group went a whole nother year. So as I believe you know, in our OJGDP grant for juveniles, we did do a change of scope. With that change of scope means we need to change a few other things, one of those being our contracts with our treatment providers. So this letter of termination is to end that group treatment in the 90 days. And we got it on your agenda today, so we can start those 90 days. We've been working with Jennifer to start the RFPs for the next piece of it that includes those new change of scope guidelines.
Thank you, Bailey. Commissioners, any questions?
The only question I have is will there end up being a gap between one provider and the other?
Yep. So what we have decided to do is do a short-term contract with Overcomers for August, September and October. That gives us enough time to get agreements in place for November 1st. Because the change of scope that we did with OJGDP is not in the state's favor, I guess, what Heather has agreed to is to basically run two different pieces of the juvenile program. So she has, we have to keep funds very separate. It's not like adult. So she has, we have to keep funds very separate. It's not like adult. And which means there's going to be multiple agreements for treatment providers in the juvenile program. So there's, it's a lot more pieces to it, but it is something that we think will benefit the community.
And there won't be a gap in the treatment providers. I met with Bailey and Heather this afternoon. And on your September, not December, September sixth meeting, we will have a short-term contract with Overcomer to continue the individual treatment for August, September, and October, like Bailey mentioned. We'll also have the RFPs, one for the pre-adjudication piece, which will be the OJGDP piece of the juvenile program and one for the state piece of the juvenile program, which will be the post-adjudication piece of it. And within those RFPs, there will be individual treatment for both and group treatment for both.
Those will be just for three months?
The RFPs will be to for the next fiscal year or the next year's grant cycle. So the OJGDP one will go through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three and the state one will go through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, so they end up back on the correct grant cycles for Bailey.
Okay.
I like it. I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close same sign. That motion carries. Item twenty-three, present for approval, quote from SSA Tech for the renewal of the Barracuda backup system in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, one thirty-three, zero cents. Adam, you want to?
I'd say, Adam, if you're busy, I'm happy to cover this for you.
No, I'm still here. We've, I've got it all locked down. We're fine. Again, Commissioner, I apologize for the inconvenience and the inappropriate language and visuals that were present before you. We'll continue to work to secure these meetings. Before you is a quote provided from SSA Tech. It's a renewal for our Barracuda backups. It co-terms us with our secure email gateway. It, what's it, a seventeen-month timeline? Hopefully providing us a bit more purchasing power in the long run as we renew two larger subscriptions at the same time. This subscription ends here at September first. So the only difference you're seeing here is we didn't have a NASBO or GSA scheduled contract revenue or contract purchasing avenue to take here. So what I had done was I reached out to Barracuda and through our purchasing managers and they worked up the fact and they validated that the pricing provided to us was the best pricing essentially presented anywhere at this current time, at least within this region. And so that is, we have that letterhead presented to you to provide that explanation and authenticity, and we just need to renew our product.
Commissioners, thank you. Adam, any questions? Adam, any reason why it didn't, why it didn't end at the end of June? To to coincide with the budget, were they not wanting to do that, that length of a of a contract?
To go out in which term? I'm sorry.
Yeah, June of twenty twenty-four.
This, based on our timeline and our budget set, this was the most that we could grab and it gave us the ability to co-term at our email security gateway.
An entertaining motion for item twenty-three, please.
I move that we provide a twentieth present.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Item twenty-four, present for approval, letter of support to Lamy Office of Outdoor Recreation, Lamy State Parks for consideration of a Lamy Outdoor Recreation Grant.
Yeah. Chairman, Pilot Hill requested a letter from the commission in support of a grant from the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation. This funds would be used to complete Phase One to build to adjust the trails as well as the trailhead that Sarah spoke of earlier. And I was happy to work with Sarah on this letter of support. Just ask that the commission support this application or this, the application to this letter.
Any, any questions, good sir?
Two signs. Do we all get to sign it? All right.
Yeah.
I was hoping for that.
Well, there are, there are no further questions or anything to add. An entertaining motion for twenty-four.
I move that we approve letter of support to Lamy Office of Outdoor Recreation, State Parks for consideration, Outdoor Recreation Grant at Pilot Hill.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Good luck, Sarah, Pilot Hills. Twenty-five, present for approval, letter to Gwinnett Parklet, Carment County clerk, to allow the Calverman to LLC doing business at Calverman State House to apply for catering permit for Lamy Stock Horse Animal Fundraising Barbecue Roundup. This is three seventy-six, County Road three eighty-seven, Saratoga, Wyoming, on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, from four P M to eleven P M, Kayla.
Good evening, commissioners. This is just a letter to allow the Calverman to use their license in Carment County. Your standard.
Commissioners, any questions? Nothing. An entertaining motion for twenty-five, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close same sign. That motion carries. Item twenty-five A, sent for approval, catering permit with UW. Can you show me a little bit more?
So it's the letter, let's just, letter to Nancy Bartholomew, the city clerk, to allow the Calverman to LLC doing business at State House to apply for catering permit within the city of Laramie for a UW tailgate on September third, twenty twenty-two, from one P M to four P M.
Commissioners, any questions? An entertaining motion for item twenty-five A, then.
I move that we approve item twenty-five A as presented.
Second.
Moving in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, I'll close same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Kayla. Appreciate it. Item twenty-six, present for discussion, the legal dumping of tires onto a parcel of land located in Rock River to direct staff to take action. Curtis, Jennifer, whoever.
We talked about this, I believe, before. For that, most of you are generally aware of that. There is a parcel of land located in the northern part of the county that was sold by a company called Green Developers to a gentleman named, or was on a contract for deed, to a gentleman named Victor James, James. And Mr. James, while he was in possession of the property, had a business called American Tire Recyclers or something like that. And he proceeded to allow people to dump several thousand tires out on this property and then do nothing with them. So we have gotten complaints since December or so about these tires. And the planning departments through Gary in Code Enforcement has sent letters and we helped send a letter. And we are in touch with Green Developers who has now terminated the contract for deed with Mr. James about what they intend to do with those tires. There has been contact with DEQ because the accumulation of those tires is in violation of DEQ's regulations and standards. And it's a hot mess. The problem that we have is we have nuisance ordinances and regulations within the zoning resolution. Our concern is we don't want to put the county in a position where we are going to end up having to pay to dispose of thousands of tires at a cost that may very well exceed the value of the property itself. So we were working with Kevin at Green Developers and trying to work with DEQ to really get DEQ to do something at all along the street. Or Green Developers, their new solution is they're going to sell the tires on it with the caveat that whoever buys it steals with the tires. We are not having much luck dealing with DEQ. They are not super responsive. So today, jury with the planning department did go out and post on a, like a four-inch post, a sign that says the dumping or unloading slash recycling of tires is prohibited in hopes it will stop. We do not know. In in talking to Kevin with Green Developers, he believes that the continued dumping has stopped. We have gotten complaints that it hasn't. We don't have any way to know whether there are additional tires or not additional tires out there. We don't have cameras out there. We don't have any, anything to know if these are the existing tires that, or there are more. So we are bringing it to you in hopes that you, I will send an email to all of you with the contact for DEQ that we have been working with. If you could reach out to him and see if we've, our office has reached out to him. We, Kurt and Matt had a phone call with Kevin from Green Developers. I was in a court hearing and wasn't able to. But we had forwarded that call information to the gentleman at DEQ and said, if you'd like to get on this call, we'd love to have everybody on the call and never even heard from him. So what we would like is we forward that information to you guys if you can reach out to DEQ, see if the influence from this board of county commissioners gets us moving anywhere. If it doesn't, at the September sixth meeting, our office will bring to you a nuisance order so that we can start the procedure to through our zoning resolutions and statutes to deal with the tires as a nuisance and get a court order declaring them as a nuisance, which then will allow us to move forward with eventually getting this cleaned up. It is not, that process is not a title process.
And that would still be at the county's cost?
It, ultimately, it's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be at the landowner's cost. However, where we have this situation where likely the costs of disposal meet or exceed the costs or the value in the property, I'm not certain it's going to happen. So I mean, worst case scenario, we probably end up a year or year and a half from now taking this property via lien or closing on a lien and then selling the property in an attempt to recoup part of the cost of disposing of the tires. So it is not a stellar outcome in any way, shape, or form. Mr. James, he's been through our office and through Circuit Court upstairs for other charges. And he is, as far as we can tell, does not have assets or anything that would be recoverable. So.
Commissioners, any questions?
I saw the pictures that Gary sent to us, and Joey, as far as the signs. Where in relationship to those signs are the tires?
So if you blow up the pictures that Gary sent, there, the sign is posted here. Just behind it, there's a track through the grass that goes back to the back of the property in that black line. Yes. And I can forward some other pictures that we have from Gary.
I drove out there.
There are thousands of years. We have one other picture from Gary that shows a closer view of the whole scope of it and then numerous pictures that show various angles of sections of the tires that are out there. So I can forward that to you guys, just all forward parts of it to, it gives you a sense of what's out there. Do you have any, do you have anything down?
Why would we expect the DEQ to want to clean that mess up any more than we would want to?
Only because DEQ has specific regulations with regard to the storage disposal and or recycling of tires.
So we would want their participation, whether it's financial or not, it would have to do with the regulatory aspect of it.
Correct, because they, the storing of those tires on those land with, on that land without a permit from DEQ and following the DEQ regulations that are required for the storage of tires, they are also in violation, direct violation of DEQ's regulations. The bigger reason that we want DEQ involved is the state likely has more contacts and resources for the disposal of those tires at a price that is hopefully less than what we would be able to deal with it at.
So I guess hard to regulate things you can't perceive, but is there something going forward so that these companies that would do the dumping would know to look for some sort of permit from Albany County or online or something? I'm just trying to stop this from happening again.
Absolutely.
And so have you actually thought about that? Apparently Kevin has done, Victor has done the same thing elsewhere in the past. I don't know whether that'd be statewide regulation.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain. And the problem is like this one where he didn't apply for any kind of a permit from us or from DEQ for land use. We didn't know that it was happening until December when Gary, the first pictures, I believe, that we have are from December when Gary went out to look at it then. And then there were a couple thousand tires on it or so. And it doubled over the spring to what it is now. But.
So writing regulations will punish people intended for, it doesn't help to
Yeah.
inlet, I mean, you know, unless unless there's a penalty included, punitive side.
The first violation letter that the planning office and Gary sent out was in January. Mr. James, however, is not at any of the addresses that are associated with the business or the contract for deed. So then he was off of the radar until he got picked up on criminal citations. And that gave us some additional information as to where to look to track him down. And once, when we were not able to get ahold of him, when we helped Gary send a second letter, I believe in May, is when we did the research to find the contact information for Green Developers and then sent CC them on the letter as well.
Yeah, so I don't hope to make a big apparatus, but it would be nice if those people have the tires who are being duped thinking that this could happen on this gentleman's land. They can go to our website and say, this person doesn't appear there, even if we don't charge for that appearance. At least those people go, oh, well, Green Developers or Victor James is not listed there. Maybe we should pick the tires up, right? Stop it at the source.
Right.
Instead of trying to run down Mr. James, which is going to be difficult at best.
And that was the whole posting assignment.
Yeah. And they're coming from all over China, Fort Collins. Okay. And I think that the, what we'd have to work on is finding a way to to alert the people disposing of the tires that they need to check the website, which we can, we can talk about. And I don't know if it's possible, but we could see this happening again.
Do we know who the tire generators are? Do we know who American Tire Dumpers customers are?
Not that we're aware of.
There's, there's stickers on some of the tires that indicate they're Fort Collins in China. But I don't know that it's those companies that are actually the ones moving them or if they're subcontracting out.
Oh, if you're in the tire business, you don't take your tires anymore. Somebody comes and picks them up.
And we don't know who that is.
And they pay to get rid of them. So basically, somebody is taking the revenue from the disposable tires or recycling or dumping or whatever you want to call it. They're not directing them to where they, they're taking them out of the stream that they're intended to go into. It's a lot of five-dollar fuel to haul tires out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah. So.
So the direction you guys would like from us is to? I think for now, we want, we want, we're asking the commissioners individually and as a whole to try to contact DEQ and get them to move if possible. We will keep working with Kevin. We invited him to this meeting, just sent him the link, but he did not appear. But his representations to me have been that tires are being removed or will be removed shortly. And that does not appear to be happening. We don't, not see any movement on that part. I may inquire by him about putting a chain camera up on this property on the pole so we can have some idea of what's happening on that land. Our, Jim had suggested maybe putting up a chain across the two tracks. So we know they stopped and take a look at the. they stop and take a look at the sign. Maybe further steps to prevent it, I guess, stop the bleeding on the first end on our side while you all, and we will continue to try to contact DEQ to see if they will take action. I'll continue to talk to Kevin and try to get the company to take action. And let him know that on September sixth, we will have an order of nuisance from you that reposed to you that if you sign, it will be filed with the district court and we will begin the proceedings of doing it ourselves. And then we will come after him for the cost.
How much, how much can we spend, you know, how much can it cost the county to, to sort of, because it's a civil thing. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not criminal. It's a regulatory or a civil thing. So that means it has to be adjudicated civilly. And I'm curious how expensive that is.
Well, because we can do most of, we would do that work in our office, but there wouldn't be the extreme amount of cost.
Legally.
Legally to do those things. The cost is in the disposal of the tires. And one of the tickets that Mr. James got was a littering ticket because a truck broke down, the tires were dumped on the side of the road. Road and Bridge ended up having to go out and pick them up and dispose of them. And I think that truckload was like thirty-two hundred dollars or something in disposal fees. So, I mean, it's a, and I haven't, because we haven't gotten there, I was hoping it wouldn't have to. I haven't looked into like the legitimate tire recyclers. Like if, if we say we have however many thousand tires or whatever there is, what kind of a discounted rate? Do you have a discounted or bulk rate for disposal that we can get as a governmental agency? I haven't looked into any of that yet.
Right.
But based on what the costs were just at our landfill here for one, I don't know what even kind of a truckload of tires. Yeah.
There was quite a few, but nowhere near what was out there.
It's up there.
There's a hundred thousand dollars worth of disposal out there.
Property is only worth, maybe fifty. Maybe. They do, they may also own other property in Albany County.
Yes.
We could, we could draw from, but this is a long process. They can try to hide assets. They can try to dump the other properties. I mean, DEQ or, or the company moving themselves is by far the preferred one. Because we're, we're gonna end up getting stuck with a very hefty bill.
Which is why we had reached out to Green Developers, have had these conversations and all of these emails in an effort to say, get this done. Like, we will help you. We don't wanna have to do all of these things. Keep your property, get this done. They're just not super responsive.
Yeah.
Well, looking at this, these photos, putting up a chain fence across the road there, I can see somebody just come through the.
Absolutely.
Prairie there and dumping it anyway. They've already come this far.
Our only thought was if we put up some kind of a barricade across the two lane where they're already driving, it may slow them down enough that they would actually read the sign that was posted. Not that it may stop, right? Not that it may prevent them from driving around it and reading the sign and dumping tires anyway. But. Yeah.
Well.
That's pretty much our attitude. Relax.
Well.
I will, I will forward the DEQ contact information on to all three of you.
Please do.
And we'll keep you informed over the next couple of weeks of what we do. And if we don't have any movement anywhere, we will have a nuisance order for you on the sixth, which after you've signed it, we'll file it in the district court.
Well.
And then start that process.
The company, Green, whatever, the landowner that's selling the land for contract for deed, they're part of it. They're not a guarantor of it. You, you don't buy a worthless piece of land for no reason out of the world, nowhere. It's, it's a shell game that creates layers. They're, they're participants.
They seem to buy random pieces of land, not just in Albany County, but in numerous states.
Wouldn't it be fun to watch what those pieces of land get used for over time?
I, I don't disagree. And it did cross my mind that I was gonna have a conversation with David about sending Gary out to check the others in Albany County to make sure we don't have these used.
These guys are operators. They're not hearing what each other is doing. But it's set up that way.
Fun stuff. So thank you for sending us that information. And if you do have the supervisor of the person who's ghosting you, if you would send that information also.
I will do some digging and find it.
Put this walker up the chain until we get somebody who won't, thank you, ghost us.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. On that optimistic note, twenty-seven, discussed and approved, providing lunch for election workers on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, general election day. So I will take this. It's come to my attention that during the election, half of the election judges were provided lunch by the Republican Party. I find that to be distasteful and non-community. So my my idea is that this commission will provide lunch to everybody as election judges and poll workers on the general election day. I can't believe this has come to that, but we are here. And I am in favor of providing lunch to everybody. I kinda wish I would've done, thought about this previous. I think those people sitting there for so many hours, providing a service at a very small amount of money, the least we could do is buy them lunch. And so this was something I had asked people on the agenda, I'd entertain any of you guys' questions or concerns.
Well, I've been one of the chief judges at one of the polls and seen that lunch being delivered, or other judges sort of watching. And everybody came prepared with their own lunches for the most part, still. I know they probably looked out and questioned why would, why would they get lunches, new lunches and the others work? So it would be a very congested part for all these judges who are spending up to fourteen hours just during the voting process.
I'm confused. Why didn't the Republican Party just provide everybody a lunch? How did they know who to provide lunch for and who not to?
Oh, it goes to Jackie's office.
Yeah, it goes to Jackie's office.
The sign polls.
Oh, so, so it was to, to poll workers who were specifically members of that party?
Correct.
And how's it been done through all the other elections, Jackie?
Never.
Anyone ever done something like that?
Have been provided to any of the election judges in the past. I was requested to provide a list of the election judges, the Republican election judges at the polls by the party chairperson of which I did. And it was, it was brought to my attention by some of the judges asking me why. I had no idea. I was totally surprised that as a chief judge and other chief judges who were of the Democratic Party, receiving the lunches and being told that these are only for the Republican election judges, please disseminate. It was a little uncomfortable, but it was done.
I can tell you.
You wouldn't have known why they wanted to list it. They just did that without consulting.
And so I can tell you that a thank you letter will go out from my office. There is a vendor in town that provided beverages to some of the election judges. And to my knowledge, it wasn't to all of the polling places, but.
The lodge, but I don't know who they, I wasn't out there.
Yeah, the lodge is the name of the vendor that now occupies the business on Grant where the old pizza place used to be. I wasn't familiar with them, but I know that was appreciative by the judges who were in receipt of them. And I can't tell you if it was at all polling places. I'm aware of a couple of polling places, but that was just, that was the vendor in the community that took beverages to. And so I don't know if they took them to Spring Garden.
No, it was the Fairgrounds in Indian Paintbrush. I know for sure.
So three of probably the six city polling places, so.
But I think they did it for everybody.
Right, right. They just brought a beverage cart and said, please, this is for the judges and.
I don't need to add work to you during election day, because I suspect this will be the, you guys will be the entity that does the lunches. But if it's, if you're amenable to that, my support, I'll vote for it.
I think it's a very nice gesture. I know it's been done in other of the counties when colleagues and I talk. That is a small gesture that has been done by the board of county commissioners of supplying lunch for the judges of election. And so I know that all judges would be most appreciative of the fact that they do bring their lunch if they're well aware that meals have not been provided in the past. But this was the first time that this situation occurred.
Yeah, whether they're Republican or Democratic Democrat, whatever, I appreciate their work at those halls. And I think it's important, maybe we'll have to start this traditionally. Because just doing it, we'll never have to have this conversation again. So I entertain a motion for item twenty-seven, to provide, approved to provide lunches at the election of November eighth.
I still move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
I apologize for the tasteless actions. I had no idea.
Yeah. Moved in second. All those in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Bye.
I was close enough to say. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I appreciate Jackie, you and your office being willing to take care of that for us. And I'm guessing because it comes out of the commission budget, or unless you had a different idea of where this could come from?
Probably less than, yes, some committed funds.
Okay, okay. Then let's do that, please. So twenty-seven A, GeoPass sponsor. This is from David's presentation in the public comment. Five hundred bucks or what is it? Are they more than that?
I think maybe a thousand. I don't know. It's either five hundred or a thousand.
We probably have more participants to send than we do.
They've got, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, either way, if you didn't do the thousand, they have different levels, like silver is the five hundred. And we get, I mean, if we have a booth, we can have a booth. If anybody from the county wanted to put anything in there to offer or whatever. And then we get one registration and then our logo is on all of the information. I think the only difference with the thousand dollars is we do get a second registration. There might be some other things, but.
And what is registration? David, what's the cost to register?
Not five hundred bucks. I think it's like a hundred and fifty bucks or something like that for a person. So we are gonna have, I think, one of our counties or commissioners. Whether it's from my budget or.
Is this the conference where you guys last presented, you and Darren?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if it was, if we were to go with thousand, it's something else.
Sure.
But offering it up to, I don't know, the jury, the one that's thinking about going or is it something?
So jury, I and Joe will probably all try to go together. So, yeah, be there.
Sir, I would guess that there would be valuable things there for Karen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can reach out to her. She can use one of those registrations. I'd be totally fine with that.
Any, any, any motion?
I have a question. How much does registration cost for, you know?
I think it's like a hundred and fifty bucks.
No, it's.
I move that we sponsor this GeoConference by providing a thousand.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? And with this would be maybe probably a missing something as well. All those in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Hi, I was close enough to say. Thank you for doing that, David.
Yeah, thank you.
Twenty-eight, approved payroll advantage for August twenty-twenty-two. I entertain that motion, please.
I move that we approve the payroll advantage for August twenty-twenty-two.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanna amend that and that you guys sign them all.
Wow, coming right out of the gate. Second agrees. All those in favor, say goodbye, say hi please.
Hi.
Bye, I was close enough to say. That motion carries. Seeing go more business for more county commissioner on August twenty, or twenty-twenty-two. Thank you for the, for maintaining a closure during this eventful evening. And thank you all staff for presenting all this stuff to us. We do appreciate it. Have a great evening. We'll see ya September sixth.